The commission being to order and stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we are ready to call the roll.
Allen?
Here.
Jim?
Yes, here.
Boyd? Briggs?
Here.
Greg?
Here.
Poole?
Here.
Richard?
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
Townsend?
Here.
It's eight out of nine, we have a quorum.
Okay, is there a motion for approval of the minutes from the March 7th meeting?
So moved.
There's a second?
Second.
All in papers say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, they'll stand approved. This is the portion for public comment, we'll open the floor for that. Did we have anybody to register to speak?
No, sir.
Okay, if nobody registered, we'll close the public comment period. Under new business tonight, 2.1, discuss and possibly take action on a retail liquor, wine, and beer shop request located at 508 South Main Street. Is there a motion to put this on the floor for discussion?
So moved.
Got a motion and two seconds? Okay, Kimberly?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This request is for a package store located at 508 South Main Street. It's the owner applicant is Wild Wine Company. They are requesting a certificate of compliance. With that application process, this is a prereq for them to get their ABC license. So with that, it has to be reviewed by the planning commission and the board of mayor Alderman. They were required to put a site plan, a minor site plan together to identify the details of the property, to make sure it meets the zoning regulations, which we, staff has reviewed and it does approve. The owner, this is core commercial, and it is a commercial convenience, so it does meet our regulations. The owner has been informed that it must meet the state and local building codes and fire codes before any operation of the business.
They need approval from us for the location?
They'll need, yes, sir.
Are they aware about the historic, the National Historic Register of the square about keeping the facade of the face of the building?
Yes, sir, if you would like to recognize, the chairman would like to recognize Mr. Ryan Matero. He is here to be able to answer any of your questions about the facade or what he plans to do with that space.
Okay, good.
Would you like to recognize him?
Evening, Commissioner, thanks for having us here. I am Ryan Mercurio, here from Beltrystikes Harrington down in Brentwood. I have with me Kristen Lee, one of the owners of the wine shop, and Dave DeRosa, who's the contractor. I'm happy to defer any technical questions to Dave. You have, and I've got copies of it as well, our site plan, which Ms. Atley said meets all of the requirements and restrictions at the commission's disposal to answer any additional questions and happy to provide an outline of what the process is like generally for an alcohol, alcoholic beverage business to be licensed in the state. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Is this where shared accounting is now?
I'm sorry?
Is this where shared accounting is located now?
Actually, they're our neighbor, they're right next door to us.
Okay.
On our building, yeah. This is our second renovation in Springfield. So we did the Springfield Antique Barn and spent significant money renovating that central building that we put another million dollars into this building to bring it up to code and to really restore it and save it.
Okay. Any other questions?
What does BB stand for?
Black velvet.
Pardon?
Black velvet.
And that's their entity name, BB Wine Shop. They'll be doing businesses, Wild Wine Company, right now. And I believe there's some question about wine, liquor, and beer and the differences between those. Under state law, retail package stores, liquor stores are first required to get a certificate of compliance from you all as the local jurisdiction, and that is the sign off for the state to say, you've met all local zoning restrictions, you've met all local planning requirements, nobody has any disqualifying criminal convictions. And so this is the first step in that, to come before y'all and request approval before we head up to the board of mayor and Alderman for sign off on what will be the final certificate of compliance. And as well as that, under state statute, it's 573404, which was passed a few years back by the legislature, retail package stores are not required to separately obtain a beer permit from the local jurisdiction, whereas, you know, typical convenience store off premise or on premises bar or restaurant would require to obtain that. Retail package stores are solely under the jurisdiction of the state once they're licensed.
Does BB Wine have any other ABC licenses?
No, sir, this is their first one.
This is a new entity and a new venture?
Yes, sir. Is it strictly going to be wine for now? It's going to be beer, wine, and liquor. It will be, you know, generally an upscale shop. I know Dave and them, I haven't seen it. I suppose we could all walk a block and a half or so, but it's just around the corner from us there. And they are considering perhaps a restaurant and bar in the future, but that is not in any way part of this request right now. We're just looking at the off premises sale. The businesses on either side are adjacent, and then there's a shared parking lot in the back that all of that strip of businesses can use.
Klein is on one side of us and Schron is on the other side of us.
I don't have any problem with liquor stores, but at that location, I just can't seem to get my arms around it. It just seems like it would mess up historic downtown Springfield to have that right there. If it was on Memorial, I wouldn't have any problem with it, but I can't see it right there. It's just my opinion.
I do know that Dave's been working closely with y'all and are working towards getting a CO and as far as we know, compliant with the historic and everything that comes along with that. I think the fact that it's going to be a well-kept upscale shop is going to contribute to that square. I certainly understand your concerns and we've talked a lot with Kristen and the rest of the ownership about, you know, maintaining decorum and all of the regulations and statutes that go along with that.
Do you have a question? I just wanted your hours of operation and is this a six day a week deal? Or have liquor stores open seven days a week down in Springfield?
They are open seven days a week. The Sunday sales was passed some years ago by the state legislature. There is, or there was, an opt-out period, but it was just for a two-hour gap on Sundays. I think either 10:00 AM or noon, I'm a little fuzzy on where that shakes out, but I'm happy to get that information for y'all. But the store is allowed to be open on Sundays.
We are currently planning to be open on Sundays or Mondays.
You're not going to be open on Sunday or Monday?
No, not now, we're not going to, no.
And that will probably be depending on what business looks like in the first few months. In my experience, having opened some stores, not here in Springfield, but elsewhere in Tennessee, Sunday and Monday business is very much hit or miss. Under state law, there's three holidays now that they have to be closed anyways, which I think are Christmas, Thanksgiving, and Easter. I think that's correct, but I can confirm that with y'all as well.
Any other questions? Is there a question?
Mr. Martin, isn't this what we just went through with the board over the past two?
We did, yes, sir. So the board of mayor and Alderman changed the zoning regulations around liquor and liquor package stores and the distance between churches and schools and other institutions recently to make way for a shop, particularly this one. This is where the request came from. The issue that's before the planning commission, so this goes back to that whole bifurcated section of law for liquor and beer. Locals regulate low-gravity beer and state regulates high-gravity beer and liquor. So the issue before the planning commission now is not whether or not we want a liquor store or a retail package store to go at 508 South Main. It's whether or not that they are in compliance and they have complied with the zoning. They've done everything that we have, they're allowed to use that facility as that. They're not in conflict with any of the zoning or planning regulations that we have.
Well, I was opposed to it then and I'm opposed to it now. So if they're in compliance, am I wrong to vote against it?
I think that the, that the planning commission should evaluate the application to see if it's in, if it's allowed use and if it's in conflict with any zoning regulations. I don't think, because, and the reason for that, Mr. Greg, is because the liquor license itself, whether or not to grant the liquor license comes from the state. That's not something that we're allowed to do. The state law says that we, as he said, Mr. Mercurio said, this is the first step that tells the state, hey, they, they're not violating any zoning regulations. So when you vote yes, if you vote yes, Mr. Greg, I don't think you're voting yes to say that you're in support of the use of the property. I think you're voting yes to say that this particular business hasn't violated any of our zoning regulations.
Okay, thank you. Okay, clarification there, huh?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Mr. Mercurio.
Okay.
You said that there would be beer now or later?
Beer is going to be, I think, intended upon opening, sorry, Ms. Lee?
We're really focusing mostly on wine. There'll be a small bit of spirits and maybe a little beer, but not, I mean, it's, that's not really our business model.
Is it high-gravity beer or?
I'm the wrong person to be asking.
I suspect it will be.
I'll tell you where I'm, you said that the law does not require a beer license to sell beer in a liquor store?
That's right. And to clarify, thank you, definition of beer is divided into high-gravity and low-gravity beer. Local jurisdictions generally have authority to regulate low-gravity beer, which is any beer 10.1% alcohol by volume, it's 8% by weight, which as, you know, is probably most beer, 95% of beer is low-gravity. And the state regulates generally wine, liquor, and high-gravity beer, which is, you know, heavy beer, stouts and things like that. And so I suspect that the business will offer low-gravity beer, which again typically would be regulated by y'all, but because it's a retail package store, a liquor store, that would be, no other permit is needed. It's not that you don't regulate it, but no other permit is needed. A local beer permit is generally not needed when there's a retail package store license issued.
Mr. Martin, that was passed with the wine and liquor, the wine and grocery store legislation. As a compromise, then the liquor package stores were allowed to sell beer.
Yes.
So that's the reason why they don't have to have a local beer license because of the legislation.
They get the liquor license first and they don't have to worry about a beer permit.
They are allowed to sell cold beer as a result of the wine and grocery store bill.
And if I may, that's in contrast to, for example, convenience stores or gas stations, which will hold a local beer permit, but of course they can't sell liquor and some may or may not be licensed to sell wine.
Okay. Any other questions?
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman. As a result of it meeting the requirements of the zoning ordinance, has no effect on whatsoever their ability to be successful at this location. This is the Bible Belt, so that's their, you know, we wish you luck, but as a result, I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. We're ready to vote.
Briggs?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Poole?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Townsend?
Passing on it.
Greg?
Yes.
And Allen?
Yes.
Passes with seven.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, we appreciate it.
Item 2.2, discuss and possibly take action on the Eden Point Phase 2 subdivision maintenance bond. Is there a motion to put this on the floor for discussion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Is that a second? Okay, Kimberly?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Eden Point Phase 2, and it is a maintenance bond. This is a preliminary step. Typically after they're finished with the infrastructure and they put the performance bond, they've met the requirements, they go to a maintenance, a one-year maintenance. And this is to ensure the integrity of the streets and the infrastructure that is being placed before it is dedicated to the city. So this is just a step that they take forward. Currently, there are 17 lots that they are finishing up. This will complete the Eden Point Phase 1 and 2.
Okay, are there questions? I don't see any hands, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. We're ready to vote.
Townsend?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Poole?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Passes with eight.
Item 2.3, discuss and possibly take action on the Reyes Estate subdivision, plat revision to remove setback verbiage. Is there a motion to put this on the floor for discussion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You might remember, this was presented to you back in 2021 by Clay Jones, who developed this development. I'm going to start off by saying that the staff has made an error as far as the review process. We should not have brought that to you guys' attention. We should not, at this point, these lots are corner lots. And the reason why that they were asking to remove them is because they have 30-foot road frontage for the front road frontage, which makes it not a very viable, buildable envelope. So we, that's the reason why, and the question was, why are we, why did we put this on here? So we put this on here originally, and it was our error that we put this on here, but what we were trying to do is to keep the developer from putting this out there. Well, has since, he has sold it to Pedro Reyes, and he is coming back to say, we would like to continue the building that they are doing right now. They are under construction, they have 28 building permits already for the 46 units that they have out there now. And before they can move forward with these five lots, we need to remove that variance so they can come to the BZA. This is not to give them approval, this is to say they can now go to the BZA and get a variance. Now, this is good for the city because it puts quality homes on these lots. So it's good for the city, it's good for the future residents that we do not do. So in the future, we will not bring these to your attention. We will make sure we work these things out.
So the staff is in favor of this?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Questions?
I have a question. Ron, what was the error from staff?
So the error is, Kimberly said, we won't do this again. We did this and brought this to you because if you see those lots, those five corner lots, those have extraordinarily small building envelopes. They're 19 feet wide, okay? What we should have done is brought that plat to you and said, we do not recommend you approve this plat because it contains five lots that have 19-foot wide building envelopes and we don't want 19-foot wide houses in the city's spread buildings, okay? That's what we should have said. What we did instead was ask that you stick it to the developer and say, we're not going, because what would generally happen is they would try to get those five lots squeezed in and then come back to the BZA later for variance on the building envelopes, right? To build the type of house that they want to build and violate the setbacks. That's what generally happens. So we said, we're going to prevent that from happening and we're going to ask you to put a note on the plat to say, no variance will be granted. Well, now what we wound up with is forcing whoever's going to develop the subdivision to build 19-foot wide house, which is not what we want, right? So we won't make that mistake again. We realize that while well-intended, it didn't have the outcome that we desired, right? So what we, what we're asking you to do is remove that note. Allow Mr. Reyes to go to the BZA for a variance so we can get a quality house on the lot because otherwise we're looking at a 19-foot wide house that doesn't fit the subdivision. And what we'll do is the next time the developer won't listen to us and wants to bring lots that are not performing, we'll come to you and say, we don't recommend you approve it.
Will the variance wind up being like a front yard setback?
Yes, because this is road frontage.
So it's all, all will be front road exceptions and nuts?
Right, and this is an RS 10, which is 30-foot front yard setback, so yes.
I think that's the issue, is they have two fronts because they're corner lots. And so one of those, I don't know which one he'll ask, which side he'll ask for the variance on, but it'll be one of those.
Motion to approve.
Do we have a motion to approve? Is there a second, Tony? Okay. We're ready to vote.
Richard?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Poole?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Passes with eight.
All right, item 2.4, discuss and possibly take action on the Highland Reserve subdivision preliminary plat. Is there a motion to put this on the floor for discussion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Well, it went down that way. Okay, Kimberly?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, this is for Highland Reserve, also known as Highland Estates. They are requesting 95 single-family homes and their future development of 278 multifamily units. The location on this is on Lary Way and Allison Lane. It's behind the college off of William A. Batson Boulevard, just to give you an idea of where that is. You may remember back on March 21, no, 2022, no, 2023, sorry. We changed the MRO, I mean, I'm sorry, we changed it from R15 to MRO, this property right here. And he has since increased the property to 61.59 acres. That was a total, I believe, it included the road from Batson.
So he included this road right here, so they will have a direct line. That was the addition to the property add-on.
The construction plans are still under review right now. This is just an approval for the preliminary plat. This is what they're proposing to do. So they still have to come up with the construction plans and a final plat, which we'll come back to you as well. This is just their overall big picture.
Okay. If we have questions, do we have somebody to answer those?
Yes, sir, if the chairman would like to recognize Jim Moore or Steve Arts, surveyor.
Okay, yeah.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Thank you for considering. Happy to answer any questions.
I had one about it with the, it was called the relocation of the overhead electric. There were poles already through there that?
Correct, the backup electric service for the hospital runs through the bluff line there, what would be the planned north section of the property.
Yeah, it's kind of right.
Yeah, right there. So I'm talking with the electric department, they would require us to bury that line in the roadway, similar to just how the new construction would be.
So everything in this subdivision will be underground electable?
Correct, that's the code now, yeah. Sidewalks and all the new goodies.
Well, Allison Lane go all the way down to that intersection next to the college?
That's correct.
Okay, that'll be called, it'll stop right there and then change names at the intersection, okay.
Is that the only entrance and exit for that?
Batson Parkway and Allison Lane, yes. It was discussed at length during rezoning with most importance giving to not connecting to Moreland Estates to bring Batson Parkway and Southmead traffic through Moreland to Walmart in Tom Austin. So the goal was to make this very much a Batson Parkway development, not an extension of Moreland Estates, which was how it was originally zoned and platted before Batson Parkway existed. So that's what we've achieved, and we don't have a multifamily plan at the moment, but the multifamily, I believe it's, for the whole project, you get one door for 7,000 feet? So that's why we, so if we were to start building and selling single-family homes, then that would, as those lots were sold, would reduce the overall amount of doors on the property. So that's why Kimberly suggested to go ahead and hash mark and label the multifamily, which is what abuts the college, and so that it's on record, is the reason for that. Phase 2, yeah.
Other questions? Where that development, where the crosshatching starts is, where that line of stakes are at the end of, sort of lined up with the end of Curtis Wood Road or Drive? Over there at the side?
No, the, so Steve, show them the cul-de-sacs that will be a buffer for existing Southmead.
All right, so then, Southmead here, Curtis Wood, like how it, Curtis Wood Lane East is going to terminate right there at that cul-de-sac. And then Walnut, Walnut Grove Drive is going to terminate right here at this cul-de-sac. Allison Lane from, well, that's actually Hickory Hills, but it's the only street that's going to come down through here. This area and this area will be the multifamily.
Show them the, adjacent to Hickory Hills, what the new homes will be that provide a buffer from the current homes. Those three cul-de-sac, or two cul-de-sacs.
Right, this area right in here, we've left R15 just to make that transition into the MRO zone. And then Southmead stops right there, and those, those lots will be developed around that cul-de-sac.
So the cul-de-sacs that are adjacent to existing homes will have R15 lots adjacent to them?
No, just, just that area right there.
Oh, well, that's, yeah, that's right.
These are all larger because they're on that cul-de-sac.
Okay.
They don't necessarily meet R15.
The real long lots up at the top, was that topography thing going off the hill?
It is.
That goes down to a creek, that's a?
That's the creek and then more on the stakes is on that.
What's that, probably a 60-foot drop there from the front of that lot to the back?
Yeah.
And it's treed for privacy. The next road, fairway trails would be to the south, north of the creek there.
This is where Curtis Wood Lane West, what kind of comes in right now, and it's just, it actually serves a house here and a house there. So it basically stops short of this building.
Question for staff. So since there's multifamily that's involved here, does a traffic study get triggered at any point looking at either the single-family or the multifamily development?
This particular sub, this particular subdivision traffic study, with the numbers that are coming in there, it will have an incentive and impact to the existing area. There will be obviously some more traffic on Batson because of how the arterial roads.
Right.
But they shouldn't be significant impact on that.
So, and that was the goal, was to get more traffic on Batson Parkway. So as it was previously entitled, Curtis Wood would have connected to Curtis Wood, and that would have created far more traffic for Moreland Estates and Southmead. So I think the- So I think the best-case scenario was to funnel as much traffic to Batson Parkway as possible. Because nobody's going to, I don't believe, somebody's going to get off of Batson Parkway coming from Tom Austin and drive through Southmead. They're going to stay on Batson Parkway and take a left on Black Patch or continue to Memorial when that extension is finished.
Other questions? Is there a motion? Got a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second. We're ready to vote.
Greg?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Bibb?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Poole?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Passes with eight.
Item 2.5, discuss and possibly take action on the Summit View subdivision. And this is a PUD final master development plan. Is there a motion to put this on the floor for discussion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, this is Summit View subdivision. This is the final master development plan. Do you remember, on December, you approved the rezone and the preliminary master plan. Originally, it was an RS 20 and has been changed to an R7 with a PUD overlay. What that means is there's a lot more details. When it becomes a PUD, there's a lot more that needs to happen to get the approval process. So now they're bringing back the final. They're very ambitious and they are ready to go. The ordinance was passed on the PUD and the rezone on January 23, 2024, and they are ready to go to final. So what does the final mean? The final just means that this is the ultimate operation of what the plan is going to look like. I've only put one page on there, but I believe there are 66 pages, and it's all involved with this. They are ready, but now, originally, the preliminary plan had more homes on there. So looking at the plans here, they had to change, they had to make some modifications from the preliminary because there is a wetland delineation or a wetland conveyance. TDEC has to approve that. Well, TDEC is a little bit overweight. So they went ahead and made concessions on that and have changed the plans a little bit from the preliminary, reducing the number. So they have come from having 35 single-family homes, now down to 33 single-family homes. And they had originally had 25 townhomes, they're now down to 20 townhomes. And that is to adjust for that wetland. And I'll show you where that is. It's right here. So now they're not necessarily waiting on TDEC. We're giving them that approval because they've made that concession. But they're still going to give them, but they don't have to wait for that as much. So staff has reviewed this. We are still looking at the construction plans, and as soon as we get those done, we'll be able to do it. I don't, that's all I have. Do you have any questions?
Do we have somebody to answer questions on this?
Yes, sir. I do have Nettie, and she's with CSR, if you have any questions.
Okay.
Hi.
Questions from the board?
I have a question, I guess it'd be ordinance. Are detention areas required to be fenced off if they are joining other property owners?
We currently do not agree with those. There are no ordinances.
Because in this case, the detention pond backs up to existing houses already. I didn't know whether because of that, adjoining other private, whether, I think a lot, it would depend upon how deep the pond had wound up being. I mean, it's supposed to be grass at the bottom, or is it just going to be overflow?
No, it's going to be a dry grass pond. Yes, sir.
Will it have overflow going into the storm sewer system?
I'm sorry?
Will it have overflow going into the storm sewer system?
Yeah, and we get, it does go into a, well, actually, in this case, it really just goes into the stream or creek from, from the detention pond. In fact, it merges on where she was just speaking of the stream coming through there. It will merge on that, depending on, and it will be leaving at the same rate, creek, the purpose, the creek stretch of ice construction should be matched with glass. I gave them exactly, it was less than this one?
It's a little less because the three lots up in the northeast corner are discharging directly into the stream. So we're over detaining in the detention pond to account for that discharge. And the pond is approximately five feet deep.
Okay. So I guess my concern is, is the corner with the stream, and then you've got three homes with driveways going through it. I know there's a difference between a stream and a floodway and a wetland conveyance, so can you talk us through, like, why it shows stream on here, why that may be different than like?
Initially, we thought it was a wet weather conveyance, so just mainly a ditch running through there. After a little more investigation, it was determined that there's a strong possibility it could be classified as a stream. But while we await that hydraulic determination, we went ahead and decided to go ahead and to adjust our layout and treat the area as a stream. So it hasn't officially been classified as a stream yet, but it is in the process, and it's a high probability that it would be. So crossing the stream, TDEC allows a certain amount of disturbance to cross the stream. So we've reduced that stream crossing to just the three driveways there, and we have already submitted an ARAP permit to TDEC for approval to cross the stream with those three driveways. And they'll have riprap and headwalls, and it will be a, a culvert pipe that goes under the driveways.
So there's no, like, floodway buffer or anything that would be?
So there is a 30-foot buffer on the stream that we are not encroaching into.
It's disturbance.
Disturbance.
Because it goes into an air stream due to siltation. So we're not allowed to operate in there, but there is no, there is no floodway in that. Identify floodway without doing a, which is a drop in analysis.
Thank you.
All right. Other questions? Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, doesn't? Okay, we're ready to vote.
Alan? Alan?
Yes. I didn't hear it.
Thomas?
Yes.
Bibb?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Poole?
Yes.
Greg?
Upstain.
Briggs?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Passes with seven.
All right. Item 2.6, discuss and possibly take action on the Summit View subdivision preliminary plat.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a motion to put this on the floor for discussion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a continuation of the Summit View. This is the preliminary, so you have just completed the final master plan development. Now, this is the preliminary plat that needs to be approved. Again, the construction plans are under review. If there are any changes, this is where it will happen. You will need to, it'll need to come back to you for a final approval. So this is, again, this is just a preliminary plat, kind of justifying what they are developing. Once the construction plans have been reviewed, someone to do the other ones, then it will come back to you again for final approval.
All right. Questions?
Move to approve.
There's a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Tony's got the second. Okay, we're ready to vote.
Thomas?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Bibb?
Yes.
Poole?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Greg?
Upstain.
Passes with seven.
All right, under other, and the old business, BZA meeting April 9.
Yes, sir. That is actually the Reyes Estates. Those five lots are going to the Board of Zoning Appeal to request a 20-foot setback.
And we also have Commissioner training on April 25 and June 11. Are you scheduled?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So, yes, April 25, 5:00. 5:30 is actually when it's going to start, but we'll have dinner for you, so 5:00. We have a great speaker, presenter, his name is Samuel Edwards, and he is an attorney focused on planning and zoning. So he's very, very knowledgeable of the topic, so prepare your questions, whatever you need. I will have an outline for you, hopefully within the next week or two, about what he will be presenting. That'll give you some time to write up some questions. I also want to remind you that we have a meeting on April 16. This is the comprehensive plan that's discussing with the Board of Mayor, Alderman, and BZA. And it's right here in this room, it starts at 5:00. And again, it's just talking about the comprehensive plan and where they are with everything and needing your input. It's not a requirement, but we would like to have your input.
We have a busy April, it sounds like. Is there anything else we need to discuss? I don't see any hands going up. Are you ready to adjourn?
Motion.
We stand adjourned.